I'm going to go real quick through the mayor's correspondence tonight, simply because we got a lot on the agenda and on the workshop. Just one real big thing. Just around the corner, we'll be opening up the City of Christmas on November 23rd at 6 o'clock. So if you have any time during the daytime from 9 o'clock on before it gets dark, they're setting up and they would love to have all the help and all the volunteers they can. Joe Schuman said he'd be out there every day and they do work seven days a week. So if you have the ability to go help, that's a great thing. The other thing tonight is, is at our last council meeting, there was a few things that were said and little things that got out of hand and we promised that we will try real hard not to have that happen again and I apologize because I am in charge and I should have gotten a little bit more under control. But again, then we're all moving forward and going on to a bigger and better night tonight. So thank you all for coming and we're going on to number five, citizens' request. If you are here to speak, you can come to the podium. Please state your name, your address, talking to the microphone. Please try not to take more than five minutes. Is there anybody here for citizens' request? Come on up, Dorothy.
Oh, I will. I will. Mary, you're ready to go.
Okay, all right.
Dorothy Cackley, 620 J Street. I am here to talk about the challenge review committee that is to be formed to review the challenge to the petition for changing the number of wards. As I view it, number one, the individual who started the petition idea is a council person. Two people besides that individual were individuals who passed the petitions to change the number of council people. And I feel that was an improper action from coming within the body that is going to be affected. It should be petitions that come from the public that are not happy with something that they want to have changed. I am here to suggest, when you vote for the individual who accompanies the mayor and the city clerk on that review committee, that at least the three individuals who passed the petitions not be considered for membership on that committee. As I spoke last night, to me, that's like putting the wolf in the hen house as far as getting an honest review of the situation. There are two people, or three people told me no, they didn't pass petitions. Two others, I asked one, did not get a response, and the other individual I did not get asked. So there's still two other people that I'm not sure whether or not they were active in passing the petitions. So please, when you're nominating somebody to appear with the mayor and the city clerk tomorrow to review those petitions, I would like for you to consider someone that weren't one of the three that actually passed the petitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Is there anyone else would like to speak right now for citizens' request? Okay, we will move forward. Item number six, minutes of the regular city council meeting and the council workshop of October 19th, 2023, minutes of the safety committee meeting of October 26th, 2023, resolution approving a liquor license for Aldi Incorporated, number 15, 3379 Main Street, Class B retail alcohol license effective November 3rd, 2023, resolution approval of a liquor license for Dr. Getwell's Bar and Grill, 1100 Main Street, Class C retail alcohol license effective November 24th, 2023, and motion to pay the bills and transfers listed in the registers, number 5370 through 5372.
Madam Mayor, before, there's a motion on the consent agenda and the agenda. Staff is requesting that item number seven be removed from the agenda at this time due to a publication error on the public hearing. Item number seven is the vacation of a portion of H Street. So again, we're asking that to be removed due to a publication error.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Onto item number eight. Now is the time and place for the public hearing of the submission of the U.S. EPA Brownfield Grant Application. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on October 26th, 2023. I am opening the public hearing at 5:36 PM.
Okay, the second cleanup grant application for the Elchem Carbide property is ready for submission to the U.S. EPA. The second section was surveyed and an auditor's platter survey was created, approved, and recorded. The area of the section is 9.44 acres and grant funds being applied for is $4,485,900. That is an updated amount that staff just got today. And so the resolution that you have in front of you is the corrected resolution with the new amount. Prior to submission of the application, a public hearing must be held.
Do we have any more discussion?
Is this the section that is in the middle where the majority of the buildings are?
Yes.
Because that's, it has to go to demo the buildings and do all the abatement and everything? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? City clerk, do we have any written comments or objections? Have they been received?
No.
If there's no more further comments or objections, I will close the public hearing at 5:38 PM. 8B, consider resolution approving a filing of the grant application through the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, the Brownfield Cleanup Grant Funding in the amount of $3,723,400. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, what's the, what was the number you just read? Corrected number.
Okay, so we have a corrected number there. It is $4,485,900. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number nine. Consider resolution setting a public hearing on the status of funded activities for the City of Keokuk Comprehensive Neighborhood Revitalization Planning Grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Pursuant to the requirements of Section 508 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1987, a public hearing to discuss the status of funding for the comprehensive revitalization neighborhood grant shall be held. The project is funded in part through community development block grant provided by the Economic Development Authority. Sarah Hecox from Regional Planning will be here for the public hearing.
Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 10. Consider resolution sending a public hearing regarding the disposal of excess property at 1901 Main Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Jerry Palmer has requested to purchase the property at 1901 Main Street. I'm not 100% sure when we actually acquired that property. There's been an appraisal taken care of. The appraised value was $14,625. Mr. Palmer is in the audience if anybody has any questions, but this is just to set a public hearing for November 16th.
Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11. Consider resolution approving an easement agreement with Decker Manufacturing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Decker Manufacturing is purchasing a lot in Kindistry Park from KEDC. The city owns a lot directly adjacent to the lot being purchased that has access to Kindistry Road. Decker's requesting an easement across the lot for access to the rear of the building they intend to construct. A public hearing on the granting of the easement was held on October 5, 2023.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 12. Do I have a motion to appoint a member to the petition review?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to read this first. A petition was filed on September 21, 2023 to place the ballot, on the ballot measure to reduce the number of wards to the City of Keokuk. The petition was immediately filed with the Lee County Auditor. After the filing of the petition, there is a five-day period where challenges can be filed to the petition. The protest is limited to the validity of the signatures only. As there was no public announcement of the receipt, the city council acknowledged receipt of the petition on October 19th, 2023. This started the five-day protest period. On October 24, 2023, a protest received by the city clerk, 35 signatures are being challenged. To be valid, the petition must have 156 signatures, which is 10% of those voting in the last general election for governor. The filed petition has 183 signatures. If all challenges are upheld, the petition would be invalid and the results of the ballot measure would be vacated. State code provides that a committee consisting of the mayor, city clerk, and one council member elected by ballot by the council hear the challenge. The council will need to nominate a member or members and vote by ballot at this meeting. After the results are announced, a motion to appoint that council member will need to be made.
A question, since Roz is on the phone, how are we going to have her submit her vote by ballot?
I'll have her text it to me.
Okay, thank you. I would nominate Mike Greenwald to sit on the committee to hear the challenges.
I would nominate Dan Tillman.
Are there seconds to those nominations?
I'll second them.
To both?
Yes.
Okay. So you have the ballots in front of you. Write the member's name of Mr., either Councilmember Tillman or Councilmember Greenwald, and yes or no. And then pass them to the city clerk. Just one big, well, put, yeah, one name on each, yeah. Okay.
Share this thing. Yeah. We have two sheets, is this to be cut in half and send the whole sheet back? Oh, shit.
I know it's cumbersome, but the state law is specific that it has to be done by ballot. Yeah, Roz is texting. I know. both. So I have to have you revote, please.
Yes.
Okay. And only mark yes for the person that you want.
Can't do both.
I got another one here.
Yeah. Okay.
We have four for Dan Tillman and three for Mike Greenwald. Now we need a motion to...
Point Mr. Tillman.
Point Mr. Tillman to the committee.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're at number 13. Boards and Commissions, do we have any reports? Boards and Commissions, do we have any reports?
You have second notifications on the Rand Park Pavilion Commission, Grand Theater Commission, and a first notification on Veterans Memorial Commission.
They don't require a vote.
No votes required.
Item number 14. Council Liaison Reports.
Great River Regional Waste. According to the draft and outlook in the future, we can look for a 2% raise in tipping fees every year for the foreseeable future.
Any more Council Liaison Reports? Staff reports.
We are nearly finished up with BMR report reviews and will be issuing the permit shortly thereafter, looking for the first week in December, hopefully December 2nd. Things are going really well.
Just to let you know, MSA Professional Services, who was hired as the planning consultant, will be here on November 16th to go over the plan for the comprehensive revitalization planning grant with the city council before submitting that to the state for the grant.
Demolition has started on Monday for the first full buildout at the Development Center. Cleaner Engineering will be starting on the Third and Franklin Project beginning of next week with some soil borings. The Riverfront Trail Project, we are on schedule for bid letting end of March, beginning of April 2024.
Do we have any new business? With that being said, we'll take a few minutes here and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll take about three or four minutes and then we'll come back, start the workshop. Thank you.[1188.71]
Okay, we're going to get started here with the Agenda Council Workshop, November 2nd, 2023. We are not doing the Business Registration Ordinance tonight, and we are moving to Item Number Two, which is the City Administrator Hiring Process. I think that the best way to handle this is to allow our citizens to speak first. When you, if you have something to say, you need to come to the podium. You need to state your name, your address, tell us your reason for coming, and try not to repeat if there's two or three people here that have the same ideas, and we will try to keep it to five minutes or less each. So if I have anybody from the audience that wants to come forward, please come forward.
I am Carol Martis, and I live at 4 Fairway Drive here in Keokuk, Iowa. The mayor to all those gathered here. I am excited about the Keokuk City Administrator position. I have earned my JD at the University of Iowa, Iowa City, Iowa. I have earned my Master's Degree in Urban and Regional Planning at the University of Iowa, Iowa City. I have earned my Bachelor of Arts, double majors in Sociology and in Biology. A professor of mine, as I was going through, as I was going through school, he said, "Pay attention to the budget." Governor Kim Rinnels signed the bill, House File 718, into law. The governor said that this is the most significant property tax reform in the state's history. I have lived in Keokuk about 26 years. I would make an excellent city administrator. Are there any questions?
I did receive your resumes in, if we, in doing that with us reaching out to Hinson Consulting LLC. All resumes have to go through them, so I have them on my desk, and I have another resume that I've received that both of them will go to the company that's doing the consulting.
Yes, okay. If, if I may, I have Janine Clover, I have Carrie Klepper, I have Dev Kadash, and I have Attorney Jack Smith and his wife, Mayor Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Carol, and thank you for reaching out and applying. Thank you very much.
My name is Tim Peebler. I reside at 12 Fairway Drive. So my reason here for being here tonight is I thought about why I wanted to come and why would I be the one to come up and speak? I really didn't have a good idea, but I felt like it was something that was really important to me, and I have a passion for this. So I'm trying to do what all of Keokuk does. When they have something like that, they step up and they try and help. So as I look at this information about the city administrator and doing an interim, it seems like it's a very important position. It has a very special skill set, and that we really need to consider adding someone in that particular role. So one of the things that I'd like to say is I'm really not a very good public speaker. I'm not always able to communicate my ideas very clearly and concisely, so I did prepare some notes that I'd like to kind of refer to as we're going through this, okay? And I also appreciate everybody here taking the time and listening. I know each and every one of you has Keokuk's best interests at heart, and I really appreciate that. So as I think about our city, we really have a lot of struggles, and probably more than any town our size. But what I also see is I also see a tremendous amount of good things happening each and every day. I see new businesses on Main Street. I see the Hidden Tower opening up with the Ames Family. Like Kathy said, we have City of Christmas coming up. There's just a lot of good things in our schools. The Y is having renovations. So there's a lot of good that's happening here, and I think we need to keep that going. One of the other things that is really interesting to me is that Candy Land has opened up, and I know everybody, that's one of everybody's favorite. So I mean, what could be better than that, right? So we are at a crossroads right now, and we're trying to decide what is the best method of going forward, and are we going to hire an interim city administrator, or are we going to just allow somebody else to take control? So my questions are, if, if we don't in fact hire a city administrator, who is actually going to be in control? With our city government, that's the way that it's designed, is that city administrator is the person that is guiding, supporting, and offering support to all the different departments. We have some really great people here that work for our city, and I feel like they do a great job each and every day, and I can't imagine asking them to take on additional roles more than what they already do. I feel like many of them are already overwhelmed, so I feel like that we really need to give them the most support that we possibly can, and to me, that is hiring an interim city administrator. And if not, if you're voting against that, then I would also ask that each and every one of you explain who's going to be in charge, who's going to lead us through the budget, who's going to possess those special skills that only a city administrator has? They've gone through years of training, they've gone through years of experience, so we need someone actually driving the bus. So if they're not driving the bus, then who's it going to be? When you have problems come up each and every day, I can't even imagine how many things come up in, in the course of a day through the city. But who is going to be responsible for that, and who's going to, to take care of those things if it's not an interim city administrator? So in closing, I'd like to encourage you to hire an interim city administrator. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Hearing none, I'll sit back down. Thanks very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
I live on 729 Grand Avenue. I just wanted to echo Tim's comments. I'm very concerned. I sat in a council meeting just a few months ago and heard about how there was roughly $400,000 of park improvement funds that had gotten lost for a long time, that City Administrator Cole Donald had recently found. We have lots of grant applications coming, coming up and getting put in place. I'm, I'm very concerned that the council might make a short-sighted decision to save money on an interim city administrator that will, in the end, cost the taxpayers of this city much more, because things will get forgotten, left behind, grant funds will be missed out on, and, and financial things will get lost and fall behind in the shuffle. So I think that the interim city administrator is key in just ensuring, seems very high-risk to me to try to go without an interim city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do I have any more comments before we move on? Don't be shy. I didn't think so.
Adam Johnson, 1115 Blondo. I believe that if we determine not to hire an interim city administrator, echoing the thoughts that some of my friends have made, we need to consider the additional responsibility being placed on department heads. My comment to my boss is often, "Hey, I had a full-time job before you gave me this. How would you like me to do it?" And I've not been vocally Cole's biggest fan. I've come in and been critical on more than one occasion. At the same time, I know the man works. I know that there are a lot of things that he does on a day-to-day basis that need to be done. We all get called out sometimes, but there's a lot of stuff that he does right now we don't know about. I've talked to Brian. He said that when he got hired, he had a stack of things on his desk that were already his responsibility. That was a conversation we had a long time ago, but what gets passed to Tom, to Pam, to Celeste, what gets passed to those people is going to just add to their responsibilities, and, and some of them may do it really well, others, as other people have already said, are already overwhelmed. We need to make sure that we're taking care of them. We're paying them for additional work that they're doing. We're looking for some sort of, at least, outside advice on how we manage receivables and, and budgets and things like that. We've got to talk about that, if we don't hire an interim, interim. And I really don't have a, an opinion on that, but from their perspective at least, to say, "Take care of our people as you add extra stress to their lives," if we're going to do that, because they work for us.
On up, Dorothy.
I was in attendance last week at the meeting when the interim topic was discussed, and the biggest push at that time seemed to be requirements about budgeting for the following At that time, and I will reiterate it against tonight, that the people sitting over here, everybody was queried, except Ms. Broomhall and Mr. Wills. Those, Mr. Baum, who's the police chief, Gabriel's, who is the fire chief, Mr. Carroll, who has an extremely large department with all the subdivisions underneath him, and Celeste even agreed that they thought that they could take care of the budgeting process themselves. And I feel that if they are confident, could I query Ms. Broomhall and Mr. Wills to see what their opinions are, or have you done that, Mayor?
Do you guys have a problem with her asking you? All right.
For this upcoming budget year, do you feel confident in being able to determine what your budget needs are and your expenditures will be?
There are a lot of things I look at, and it's not just the budget. There's a lot of questions I have on a almost daily basis that I can ask Cole about without, you know, worrying about it's going to be a correct answer. I go to him for a lot of guidance and wisdom. Narrowing it down to the budget, it's going to be difficult. There are things down at the wastewater plant that pop up all the time, some things you know the budget for, other things you don't, that just have to be taken care of. And I think I probably speak for everybody else, if we have to do it, we will do it, but we always appreciate some more help.
Okay.
And the guidance.
In the scheme of the
In the scheme of the city budget, my department is very minute, so budgeting is not a problem for me. As the past 30 years, if the council asks me to take on more, I take on more. But I'm already overwhelmed. I really don't have time to take on more. I go on vacation, and I do work at home. I don't have time. I will do it, but I truly do not have the time capacity to take on more.
Okay. So are you saying then that you rely on Mr. O'Donnell for your work?
I do not know what Mr. O'Donnell does that would come to my desk, but I do rely on Cole quite a bit as far as questions, bouncing ideas. If I'm having an issue, I do depend on Cole and the mayor quite a bit.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we go back to another issue about the supposed candidate of choice that has already been presented before you determined hiring the company. Without being able to know much about that individual, I did a little survey of people that they put in their quote-unquote "application" or informational packet, and not very many of the towns referenced that they had found administrators for seem to be of large populations, many of them smaller. So are we going to make sure that said candidate of choice or candidates that are presented are going to be familiar with the type of processes that we have here in Kilkuk? A population of 5,000 to 8,000 may not have the type of industries that we have. So those are things that I hope, if you decide to proceed, that you take into consideration. I will remind you, and it's been talked about sort of briefly, but at the last meeting also, Roger Bryant mentioned that the city operated as a mayor council form of government before we went to the city administrator. And may I remind you that the population of Kilkuk was much larger at that time than it is now. We had many more industries then than we do now. So I hope that maybe we can get on the purview of maybe we could go back to a full-time mayor and a council form of government. Okay? Thank you.
Dorothy, if I may, I would like to address the three points that you raised here just now. First off, I do agree with you. The presentation of the temporary position, I thought, was not done in an adequate manner with having a candidate already identified with a benefits package and a salary range. It really was a sticker shock, I feel, to a lot of us on the council, and it muddied the whole conversation, the meeting that we had last week. We all got fixated on that person as opposed to the position and the process. And so I agree with that point that you made, that I feel like if there had not been information about a candidate and the conversation was simply, do we get an interim or not? I feel like it would have been a much better conversation last week. So I'm very proud and happy that we're having this conversation tonight so that we can make all these thoughts clear and concise. The next one that I would like to point out, you bring up the budget. And yes, our department heads do a great job every year working on their budgets, on the expense side of things. They know their departments in and out. However, a budget has two sides to it. There's expenses and there's revenues. And I don't believe, I may be wrong, but I don't believe that with Cole departing, that there is a single member on staff that has done revenues for budget in the past. And that is also where all this legislation that everyone keeps talking about that's changing everything, that's the revenue side of it. So that is a concern. Our departments, they know their expenses inside and out, but if they don't know the revenue to work with, how can they accurately then dictate their expenses? So that would just be a statement I'd make on that. And then the third one, I do believe in maintaining a city administrator form of government. Yes, long ago, there was more population and we did not have a city administrator, but then that also was a completely different tax-based scenario. And also these days, government is different. There's many regulations that change, and I believe it's critical that we do have an educated, certified professional running the day-to-day operations of the city.
Do we, or are we familiar with the implementation date of the 718 House file?
The bill has been signed, and so what it is, is there is a, it changes several different things, and it's, some of it's very complex. One of the things is that it does give an extra 30 days to file the budget, but that's because we have to have more public hearings. It takes certain levies, you know, we have multiple levies that we can put on the taxes. The one that funds the general fund the most is the, what we call the 810 limit. The city is at that 810. And then there's also the emergency levy, which is 27 cents more that we can levy for general corporate purpose. That is going to be added in and compressed with some of these other levies to create a new 810 levy. And in doing that, staff is not sure how that's going to affect this year's budget or next year's budget or the budget after until there's been some more education on it. Celeste is going to sit in on a webinar through the Department of Management and the Iowa League of Cities to learn more about that process and what the bill does. Another part of the bill is that it restricts the growth of valuations by no more than 2%. So I was talking with Councilmember Tillman earlier about the effect of the rollback because the residential rollback is reduced. So this year, the city and all the other taxing entities can tax on about 55% of your assessed valuation of your home. Next year, it's going to be, what do I have, 46%? 46%. So it goes down almost nine points. Now, on the converse side, valuations have jumped a lot. But with the rollback and with the new legislation, we are certainly not going to capture all of that growth in valuations. How much, I don't know. It could be, you know, we could hit that 2% valuation growth, and okay, we get 2%. But what about the next year, when our valuations go back to being normal growth, which was half a percent a year is what our normal valuation growth is? And that's not sustainable for the long term. So there is a lot of complexity, and the council is wanting to have some of those projections done, and that's not something that can necessarily be done by one person. If I were here to do it, I'd be working with Celeste. We'd be working on different scenarios and seeing what's going on. But somebody who's had multiple years' experience with municipal financing is going to be needed to do those projections. Certainly, we could get through this year, I think, but for multi-year projections, you're going to need somebody that has the experience in municipal finance, in my opinion.
Okay. But I, I'm not sure that you clarified the total implementation of 718 as to date.
This budget season. This is all that I'm saying to you. So what it is, is our budget process starts here in December. It's in place.
Okay. I will have to verify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Do we have any more citizens that would like to speak? Then maybe, do we want to move on to what the? Sure, you can. Come on up.
So for this interim city administrator, is it just for the purpose of the new budget, or is it also to help with the other processes that go along?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. My name is Erica Barrett, and I live at 729 Grand Avenue. And my question is, what I, do you need me to say it again? Okay. So, yeah.
My interpretation would be that the most important role would be the budget, but all the other aspects still need to be taken care of on a day-to-day basis as well.
So far, the drive, though, for the interim.
We don't have an interim.
No, the drive for us to hire an interim is the finance. That's the big concern. Everybody that, everybody that I've even listened to tonight, everybody that wants us to hire an interim is because we're off the budget. That is what was said last week. That's what's been echoed since we started this. The big concern of why we need an interim is because we need them for the budget, because we need them now. And let me make something really clear. My question, I guess, would be is, do you want a part-time or do you want a full-time? Because if we hire Henson to look for an interim, while they're looking for an interim, they're not looking for a full-time. He mentioned that in a meeting, that, because I said, what if we don't hire you for an interim? He said, well, then the process to look for a full-time starts earlier. So that's the real question here. I'm not saying we don't need a city administrator, but do we really want to waste time on somebody that's only going to be here for a short time when we could start the process sooner and looking for somebody full-time now versus looking for an interim now? That's the real question about whether we're going to hire an interim or not.
I would suggest at this time that maybe we let Henson Consulting talk about what the process would be with an interim in place as well.
Brent's on the phone.
So we have Henson Consulting LLC on the phone, and he is going to give you just a little bit of a breakdown as to what could happen and couldn't happen, and what their goals are, and how they look for a city administrator as opposed to an interim, and how they look for an interim. Brent, you are on the table now. It's your turn.
All right. Good. Well, thank you for everybody's comments so far, and to the mayor and council for having me here. Certainly, you know, we want to try to be responsive to the city's needs, the city's wants, et cetera, in this process. Just based on our analysis of kind of where you're at, what you've got coming up, we think it's really important that you consider an interim. Really, the advantage to that is you're going to have somebody that can essentially make sure that there's not a gap. You know, my understanding, my understanding is Cole was there until December 8th. You know, we've got a, you know, I think, an outstanding candidate for this that could start right after that, so essentially you wouldn't have a vacancy in the office. There's a lot of things coming up for the city, as was mentioned, budget, but I believe you've also got union negotiations coming up. That plays a big role in what's going to go on. And then frankly, with the way the position is structured, with having so much finance responsibility, really, you've got a lot of day-to-day stuff, even beyond any, you know, projects, other things that you have going on that this person needs to handle. You know, basically, our assessment of the situation was you were going to be best off if you didn't have a gap in that office. I think that, you know, basically, you're not running at full capacity when you don't have a city administrator, when you have that vacancy. You're putting a lot on your existing staff and your department managers. And I think that when you take a look at all the things that are going to be coming up, you know, I think even if we were to start, you know, so certainly, you know, this is, as I stated in the personnel meeting, to the people that were there, you know, this is the council's decision. You know, you guys are, you guys are the leaders of your community, that's why you have that role, and you guys' ability and prerogative make the decisions on behalf of your community. What I would advise, the reason that, and it was mentioned here, that we had said that, you know, if you don't hire an interim, then we'll start the permanent process earlier. Really, the main reason that I said that was that I think it then really makes it imperative that we get going on the permanent process. If we have an interim in here, basically, we're going to put ourselves in better position as far as the calendar goes, both from a standpoint, we've got the holidays coming up, it's a terrible time to try to recruit during the holidays. We've got the budget process starting. Honestly, it's a tough time to start recruiting in January, February, whereas we can push it out a little bit more into kind of end of February, beginning of March, we think we'll get better candidates for the permanent position. I mean, that's what the schedule that we came up with for you in the interim, the proposals that we've submitted already to this point, that was based around, we think, putting you in the best position, making sure that you don't have a lag in that administrator's office, that you've got somebody there on a day-to-day basis that's making decisions and doing all the things an administrator needs to do, that they're helping you deal with some of these major processes that you've got coming up. And then ultimately, also in our permanent surge, that we're putting that new permanent position. You know, they're not coming into an office where, you know, nothing's been done in a lot of areas for a couple of months. They're not coming into a process where maybe the union negotiations kind of went off the rails and it presented a tough situation budgetarily. They're not coming into a situation where the budget's basically done, because even if we moved it absolutely full steam, we're really only going to get this, we're only going to get a permanent person, which may be, you know, a couple of months earlier at best. So we really think that it's in your best position, strongly our recommendation, that you could do this interim, because we think that that's going to put you in the best position possible. But certainly, I guess, with all that said, you know, happy to take any questions or provide any other information that I can.
Brent?
This is Shelley. I have a question regards to, so the proposal for the interim, you had identified somebody. However, in that proposal, you had also stated that if, you know, we can, it was about moving forward with an interview, and that if we were unhappy with that, that perhaps there was maybe other candidates. And I just wanted to make sure that you clarified what you had proposed in the interim proposal.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're, you know, basically, what we have tried to do to this point is put you in the best position possible. Now, ultimately, it is the council's decision, 100%. You know, if you, if you were to interview this person that we brought forward and that we put forward to you, and you were not happy with what you heard, we've got other options for you as far as that goes to look at from the interim standpoint. We think, you know, this person would be a very, very good option, but ultimately, that is going to be the council's choice. You know, you're not, you're not just cornered to, you have to hire this person, but we're just trying to put you in that position, you know, the best position possible.
Thank you.
Brent, if we would have someone right now that is interested in being the full-time and would want to put their name in the bucket, they would not have to go through the interim process, right?
If you, you're saying if you just hired somebody, you know, didn't do a search process per se, and and just, and just hired somebody full-time?
No, I'm saying if somebody is really interested in the full-time position as city administrator and they're qualified and they have submitted a resume which, or they do submit a resume or we have people local or we have people from the area and they submit their resumes and they come to, they would be sent to you. What I'm asking is, is if we would go ahead and interview those people or would they have to wait for the, the process to be started?
Typically, what I would advise is that you have, you know, it certainly wouldn't be the first time that we've had in these processes, somebody, you know, a local candidate or local candidates. I, I think that that's good. I, I think obviously that's showing interest. There's some, there's some advantages to that for the city potentially. But I, I would recommend that you, we do this as part of a whole process. You know, otherwise, you know, I guess, I mean, ultimately, again, that's, you know, that's kind of the council's prerogative. You know, if you'd want to do something different, we can talk about that. But, but I guess left to my own devices or without specific direction on it, I'd recommend having those people apply through the regular process and have, have their, you know, credentials and suitability for the position assessed alongside the others. That would apply.
Thank you.
Shouldn't we entertain local options for the interim as well?
Okay, so the.
So the biggest, if I could comment to that. So I really think, and this question did come up during the personnel meeting. And, you know, it might seem a little counterintuitive, but really, I, I feel like, you know, you, you need, with an interim, what you're getting is, you're getting somebody that can come in right away and beat your boots on the ground and immediately start, you know, into all the things that the position does. You really are not going to get much value out of the interim if the person has to come in and kind of learn everything there is to know about municipal government. They're, they're not going to be able to provide that much value in just a few months. Whereas with the permanent position, theoretically, we, you know, put that person in the best position possible. There's adequate support for that person to, to learn and grow. They'd be much better placed to be in the permanent position. I, I don't think you'd want somebody new to city government in a permanent position. I think that there, there just is a lot less value for the city in doing that.
What I was going to suggest, this is Shelley again, is that if the council would like to consider other candidates, we do have an option. I think that, you know, we could perhaps open up the application for a period of one week with a request for candidates to submit a cover letter, resume, and five professional references. The council can assign an existing committee or appoint council members to an ad hoc committee to review the applications and provide recommendations to the council. The council can decide then whether they would like to interview the additional candidates for the interim position.
I'd like to see local option at least explored for an interim. I think that we're forgetting that we do have people who have been intimately involved with municipal government. So I don't know why they wouldn't be given a chance if they were, were wanting to apply.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. But then also, I would just say is, is that we, we as a council then have to make a decision on what that process is going to look like.
Well, in response to your question about the candidate, we really can't discuss a candidate until we decide whether we want to hire an interim. So really, that's kind of out of order. We can't really talk about a candidate until we, as a council, decide that that's where we want to move forward to. So until we make a decision, and obviously on a workshop, we can't make any decisions tonight. We can't make any votes. It's strictly discussion. So, you know, that, that part, if we decide when we vote, if this, if this gets put on next meeting's agenda that we vote on it, potentially then you could, you could put either on the agenda to vote for, to look at a candidate if that passed. And it'd have to be, you know, prerequisite that it passed. But realistically, until we actually decide what we're going to do, interim or non-interim, discussing any, any type of candidacy for an interim doesn't really, we can't really, can't really move on that anymore.
And I think the thought, though, is that people are hung up with the fact that it's like, this is the candidate that the consultant group wants us to have. And I, I just want everyone to think of the possibility that it doesn't have to be that person. We're able to open it up locally.
Totally agree.
And potentially have someone else. So we, I don't want us to get hung up on, we don't want an interim because we don't want it to be this person that they're pushing to us.
However, I have heard that there are council people that do not want interims. And so I did draft an email and I sent it to council and many community leaders today. And I would like to share that at this point in time. So it's on the public record. At the last city council meeting, city of Kielkuk, the council decided to, considered two proposals from one of the top local government hiring, planning, and finance consultants in the state of Iowa. Henson Consulting, due to their experience, understanding of the current demands on the cities, the approaching holiday season, and knowledge of Kielkuk, they submitted a proposal to recommend the hiring of an interim city administrator they had already approached to gauge their interest. And a proposal to undertake a search for a permanent city administrator starting in January. Henson explains the hiring of interim versus a permanent position with the analogy that hiring an interim is more like buying a used car versus a new car. You have to look at what is on the lot and choose from those options. When you buy a new car, like finding a permanent city administrator, you can order it with all the bells and whistles and get what is a good fit. The council agreed to hire Henson Consulting to lead the process for a permanent position. However, opposed the proposal to interview a possible candidate with 15 years' experience in city administration with an expertise in finance. The resume has been provided to the personnel committee. This interim proposal does not force the council to hire the candidate or bind the city into a financial agreement for compensation. In the case that the council or the candidate does not think it is a good fit, we can choose to go in a different direction. In the case that the council and the candidate think it is a good fit, the council with the assistance of the city attorney will negotiate the final employment agreement. From what I have heard in conversations with council members is that they were opposed to the following. Compensation, proposed at an equivalent of $140,000 a year based on the salary of our current city administrator at $67.31 per hour. This included the option on this proposal of health coverage and a 40-hour week salary employee arrangement. Second, hybrid office remote arrangement. Candidates will be commuting from several hours, so they would like to be in the office three days per week. Based on your meeting schedule, we would recommend Wednesday through Friday and work remotely otherwise. We also recommend that the city reimburse for the candidate round-trip mileage each week. Council has been approached by Kielkuk residents who would like to be considered for the position and the council would like to consider qualified local candidates for the interim position. First, the recommended compensation package is based on the salary of the current city administrator. The estimated cost for the interim, including salary, benefits, and mileage, is approximately $100,000 for six months. This expense equals 0.33% of an estimated $30 million annual city budget. I suggest the council consider using unassigned or unrestricted funds from fiscal year 2024. According to the Iowa Department of Management, the ending fund balance for the city of Kielkuk was $19.33 million in fiscal year 2024. 3.2 million is unassigned or unrestricted and 4.44 million is restricted. These funds are, but perhaps can undergo an internal loan. These funds or any unrestricted source budgeted in fiscal year 2024 could be used to pay for an interim administrator. Second, with the adoption of our recently approved employee handbook, the flexible work schedule for the interim is, is within our policy in regards to exempt employees and flexible schedule. Exempt employee, an exempt employee is defined as an individual employed by the city who has been determined to be exempt as defined by the Fair Labor Standard Act and consequently is not required to receive overtime for work performed over 40 hours in an established seven-day work week. In recognition of their exempt status, these employees are not subject to the same rigid scheduling requirements as non-exempt employees. However, it is expected that this provision will not be abused and that exempt personnel shall set a good example by their attendance, promptness, and job dedication. Flexible schedule, some departments within the city may offer flexible schedules to accommodate employee situations. The department head must be notified of such a request by the employee in writing. Every attempt will be made to accommodate the employee, but only if it does not have a negative impact on the overall operation or causes another employee hardship doing his/her job. If flex hours are granted, then the employee must stick to those hours or lose the privilege. Third, we are operating on a tight timeline in order to identify, interview, negotiate a contract, and hire an interim by December 8th. If the council would like to consider other candidates, I would recommend the council open the application period for one week with a request for candidates to submit a cover letter, resume, and five professional references. The council can assist an existing committee or appoint council members to an ad hoc committee to review the applications and provide recommendations to the council. The council can then decide whether they would like to interview additional candidates for the interim position. As you can probably tell by now, I am extremely concerned about the operation of the city in the interim and also how not hiring an interim could negatively impact the search for hiring a permanent candidate. I think these are, there are three types of concerns that need to be considered when developing a path forward. I think, first, the ability to keep order and manage the city business in the interim. Second, how the decision of the council to not hire an interim could impact the quality of candidate pool for a permanent search, city administrator. And finally, the question of whether we are setting up an incoming city administrator in the community of Kielkuk for long-term success. I would like to ask the council to consider the following information while the members deliberate on next steps for professional management. Over the past few weeks, I have reached out to fellow council members, city staff, Mike Norris, community partners, colleagues in the state of Iowa, and constituents to assist me in identifying the concerns and issues below and many more that are not named. Who will manage the budget process for fiscal year 2025 budget? And does that person understand the state requirements and internal revenue and cost structures? The last financial report sent to the state of Iowa ending June 30th, 2023, shows Kielkuk with a $30 million budget, $30 million in revenues and $27 million expenditures out and $19.33 million ending fund balance of June 30th, 2023. Furthermore, who will be connected to the wider statewide network with changing state legislation, guidance, and navigating budgeting and the day-to-day operations of the city? Did I miss a page? Recently, the Iowa Department of Revenue released the residential rollback number for fiscal year 2025. The residential rollback couples agricultural property values to residential property values so that one classification does not outgrow faster than the other. The residential rollback for last year was 54.65%, meaning that the city can only tax 54.65% of the total assessed value of a home. This year, the valuations have spiked due to the housing market in the 2021, 2022 year. Taxes are always a year behind. The result is a rollback that drops to 46.34%. Without the new property assessments, staff cannot determine the effect of the reduction. However, staff expect the most, if not all, of the increase will be eroded by the rollback. Another factor is the property tax legislation and its limitation on valuation growth. In December, we will begin negotiations with the three unions representing public safety and public work staff and around 60% of our operational budget. Who will create, implement strategy? Calculate the financial floor and ceiling as well as analyze compounded, compounded impacts of decisions in the coming years, especially with inflation. Who will go, second, in addition, who will be the go-to person at City Hall? The point of contact for the public, staff, and council. Manager of staff as well communicate important information to the council until a new administrator is hired. The city administrator form government assigns these duties and many more to the city administrator. Without an interim, it is responsibility of the council to create and work out the details of a structure. In one month, that provides consistent, organized leadership for staff, the public, and council. Finally, the current city administrator position also serves as the finance director and is in charge of economic development and human resource management. I believe this will make it difficult for anyone to join our organization and succeed. I believe an interim with years of experience working in different positions and communities could provide powerful insight as to the condition of the city's finance operations and provide recommendations for long-term health of the city. Any entity with a $30 million budget will have a man, will have a manager or leader that takes care of the magnitude of that spending and accompanying liability. If there is a time where the council or board of that entity does not choose to have a manager or leader, the council or board must show the duties and liabilities are covered during the interim time to safeguard all ongoing and future operations. This being said, I ask the council to reconsider hiring an interim to lead us through the coming months.
I have a couple of comments to that. So on your last page, you referenced House File Bill 718. The rollback from 54% to 46%.
That is not House File 718.
Anyway, that's a rollback, it's a rollback, the residential rollback. Right? In April 13th, the Ways and Means Community Chairman Bob Kaufman stated that statewide, houses' assessment value went up an average of 22%. That's statewide average. And that's searchable, you can find that. But our Ways and Means Committee Chairman stated that on record. So using that analogy and these percentages, if you use a $100,000 home, you can do it with a $10,000 home, a $1 million home. You just move your decimal. $100,000 home assessed value. Taxable on that $100,000 home is 54.65%, which is $54,650. Now, take that same home this year that jumped 22%. So now that $100,000 home is assessed at $122,000 for this tax year. You take 46.34% of that. That equates to $56,534. That's actually an increase of $1,884. So the concerns about, oh, well, we're going to lose some of our revenue because the percentage went down. Yeah, the percentage went down, but the assessments jumped. The percentage went down nine points, eight points, but it jumped 22 points. The actual taxable income did.
Dan, just, just for a reference on Kilkawawa taxes, my taxes only went up 4.8%.
I, I'm, I understand that.
In that instance, you're losing money off of my tax dollars.
But that's one house. Mine, mine jumped more than that. I know. Mine, mine jumped quite a bit. I think mine actually went up more than 22%. It's just a state average. On the other, the other statement that seems to be at hand is we need somebody experienced with this finance. I'm not saying we don't need somebody experienced, but since this is a brand-new law, there is nobody in the state that is experienced with this brand-new ruling because it doesn't take effect until the beginning of this coming year. So even if they've been with their city for 20 years, they've got all the background with that city, but they don't know any more about this new legislation than anybody else does because this is the first year it's ever been enacted. So using that as a, as a leverage, oh, well, we need somebody that, that's familiar with it. Nobody's familiar with it. They just started it. So some of that, and, and like I stated earlier, I'm not saying we're not trying to hire an administrator. I just don't see a benefit of searching for a part-time when we ought to be pooling our resources and looking for a full-time. Because there's no guarantee, and this is what you need to fully understand. And I know you, you're going to jump back and say, well, they've already given us a candidate. There's no guarantee if we tell them to go forward and look for an interim. And we're going to hire an interim right away either. There's no guarantee of that. We may, we, the, the one candidate that they've already showed us, we may shoot down. We may shoot down the next three because we don't like them. So now we've spent potentially three or four months looking for an interim when we could have been looking for a full-time. And we need to understand that, that the timetable is our, is our biggest hurdle. We don't want to be without an administrator. I understand that. But I still think our priorities need to be on the job, not a part-time.
Well, can you clarify, I thought 718 made it so that the valuations, it didn't, if the growth was capped at 2%?
So, yes. So what it is, is, is all those things factor into what the actual taxable valuations are going to be. First off, you have the rollback, right? And Councilman Tillman quoted 22% on average statewide. I, you know, I, I'm going to offer an opinion here that I don't believe that ours went up 22%, okay? They did jump, but I don't, I don't believe they went up 22%. We'll find that out first of December or so because that's when the valuations have to be to, to the city's further calculations. Secondly, yes, 718 caps the valuation. Secondly, yes, 718 caps the valuation growth at 2%. I took the $1,800 increase in valuation or taxable valuation that Councilman Tillman came up with for that $100,000, that equates to 3.2%. So we'll only capture 2% of that. Now, there's some other factors, again, within the bill for 718 that start the compression of that tax levy. That is a complexity that needs to be filtered out. As I stated before, well, Councilman Tillman stated, and again, this is my opinion, and council opinion is what counts, but my opinion is this, is that he stated that nobody has experience in this bill. You are correct. But without somebody with experience in municipal financing, they're not going to understand the new restrictions that 718 places upon the cities, in my opinion.
So somebody who has financial director experience or finance experience is starting with a solid foundation of understanding finance at the local government level, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Also, I think it's critical, and Cole knows this well, and I spoke with the superintendent yesterday, is that who will be connected to the wider statewide network with all this changing stuff? Every single day, I get emails from the League of Cities about what's going on, and their consistent aspect of what's the new guidance, what's the new, you know, and they don't know all the things and how it's all going to work out. And it's critical that we have somebody who's connected, and Cole is involved in the League of Cities as a, I think you were in the legislative committee and things like that, but those are things that that person is responsible for. And they also know when they run upon something that's difficult, they can call upon another colleague that is dealing with the same issues that they are as well. Also, though, if we don't go with an interim, then we have a month and three days, I think, what is it, how many days, or five days, for the council to create a plan so that all of these things, somebody is responsible and accountable for. And I'm asking the council right now, what's that plan? What's the next three steps?
I don't have an answer for what the plan is because the council gets to make that plan, but I also think that this is an extremely important decision, and that we keep saying, we got to do this in a month, we got to do this in two months, we got to do this, we got to do this, we got to do that. We need to take whatever time the city of Kiyakuk and this council needs to get the right person. And for us to be told that this person that's here is the right person, we have to look at that. And I think that's what's holding a lot of the process up, is maybe next week, I mean, at the next council, two weeks from now, at the next council meeting, we will decide whether we want to look for an interim or look for a full-time administrator. But for us to say right now, we're going to interview at the next council meeting, I don't think we're prepared for that. I just don't think so.
Kathy, that's not at all the proposal.
I know, I'm just saying, I don't think we're prepared for that. I think that we have to take a little bit of time and decide what ourselves and the city of Kiyakuk can do what's best. I hear that, I hear you people that are saying we need an interim, I hear the people that are saying we need an administrator, but for us to do this, oh, we got to do this right away, we have to look at it. I just think we're just, we're assuming that nobody in our community and nobody on our staff can take care of things. And we don't, we haven't found that out yet. We just haven't found that out yet. Today, I went, I mean, this week, I've gone to all the people in City Hall because this is going to affect City Hall more than it's going to affect anybody at the beginning. I've gone to everybody at City Hall, and everybody in City Hall has different opinions. They all are not saying we need to do this, or we have to do this, but not everybody wants an interim, not everybody wants, doesn't want to go ahead and get a full-time, not everybody thinks that the city can't handle it. We need to make a decision, and we don't need to do it, you know, just off the cuff because we have to get it done right now. And if it comes to after the first of the year, and this stuff that is going to happen, and we know it's going to happen, why can't we find somebody that can help us with that, or can show us what to do, just that part, so we get through it and we don't spend any more money? All I'm saying is, is this council isn't in agreement, and the citizens of Kiyakuk aren't in agreement, and we don't need to just rush into something. And that's just my opinion.
So, I want to reframe the actual conversation, and my apologies. I think everybody's focused on the interim concept. Let's step out and say we don't go with an interim, and that's the thing that I want the council to discuss right now. If we don't have an interim, how are we going to create a structure for management and accountability of the city? We have a month to create that structure, and that is our responsibility. So let's not even talk about the interim now. Take that out, because we've decided, obviously, we decided last week not to hire an interim in the process that was proposed. So now, if we don't hire an interim, what does the council want to do?
I don't think last week we decided not to hire an interim. We decided not to have Hinson Consulting hire an interim for us.
So the scenario, though...
We did not decide not to hire an interim.
I'm discussing the scenario.
I know you are.
That if we do not, this is the scenario. This is not anything about the interim or anything. As a scenario, if in two weeks, we choose not to have Hinson Consulting hire an interim, or we choose to ask the existing staff to lead this process over the coming months, now council is responsible for the fiduciary responsibility of the community and to set up an internal structure that we refuse to hire for, and tell us how that's going to happen. We have one month to set that structure up for management and accountability of the city.
So why do we only have one month?
Because the city administrator is going to be gone December 8. What are we going to do then? All the roles and things that he does will not be being fulfilled. Who's going to take on those responsibilities?
Department heads and city council. That falls on us. Because like I stated earlier, there's no guarantee that we're going to hire an interim by the end of December. So what do we do come December if we've shot down all the interims they got? Now, we just decide now at that point, we need to worry about it? We need to be thinking about that now anyway. There's no guarantee, and I said it in one of the personnel meetings, and I'm going to say it tonight, and I'm going to echo exactly what the mayor said. When we, whether we come here with one candidate or three candidates, when that time arrives, we need to come here prepared to send all three of them home and say, no, we don't want any of the three of you. You think about when you go look at a vehicle, you go to a car dealer shipping, you're wanting to buy a new car, and this salesman tells you, oh, you got to have this one, this is the one you got to have. Do you let him push you into that, or you tell him, no, I think I'll go home and I'll look again tomorrow? And that's what we need to understand, is if we take our time and get it right, then it'll work. If we rush through this, and we just, we got to have somebody now, and then we put them in there, and they last a year, six months, two years, and then we're doing this all over again because we pushed it and we thought we had to get it done right now, who is that helping?
So, as I said, I'm not talking about the interim anymore. I'm talking about, we have no one in the city administration position. What is the city council going to do to set up a structure for management of all of these processes, to set up accountability? And we can't just say we're going to pass it on to the department heads because we have to provide them guidance, we have to decide who's responsible for what, and ask them, also, you're doing a job that we refuse to fill, what are we going to compensate them for the additional work?
So what you're talking about is overlap from Cole's position, which would fall to the mayor and the clerk, because they're pretty much doing, working alongside Cole currently to take care of all those responsibilities you're referring to.
So is the clerk, that's been with us for two years. Do you feel that you have the experience to calculate the floor and the ceiling for negotiations for three labor unions, to navigate the new process with 718, House File, and to also calculate all of the revenue?
I'll do whatever.
But I'm asking you, do you have the experience? Do you have the experience, Celeste?
I'm learning every day.
But do you have the experience? Have you done it before?
I don't think anyone's done the new, like that. But I don't think anyone has done the new legislation, House File, so that's going to be a learning experience.
We shouldn't be putting Celeste or any employee on the spot like this. At this point, there's no one who is qualified to do the city administrator job, or they would be applying to be the city administrator.
True.
I would assume. If they are able to fulfill all of his roles, I don't know why they wouldn't be the city administrator.
So, let me just say one thing. Thank you, Ross. We went through this the last time. We asked everybody this, that, and the other, and put them on the spot. We're not going to do that. If we have to come up with a plan, we will do it together, either not in front of everybody, or we will put it in writing what we can and can't do to help. That's the only fair way to do it. I will tell you this, again, I told you I went to the whole staff in, at City Hall here and asked them questions. Not one person that I talked to said that they did not, that they thought that we could not hold on for maybe a month, maybe two months, maybe try to get something done until we can make a decision. That's number one. Number two, the department, all the department heads have done their budgeting and turned them into the city administrator, or to the mayor, or to whomever, the finance person for all the years that we've been in Kiyakuk. And so I'm not, my goal would be to hire a city administrator. I'm not saying we should never. And do I want to be a full-time mayor? Heavens, no. Do I have the qualifications? No, I don't have them. I have a lot of knowledge, I have a lot of respect for the city of Kiyakuk, but that's not the point. The point here is, is we need to make this, we need to quit saying, this person can't do this, this person can't do that, and we need to find the people that, we can find the people that can. I didn't talk to one person in City Hall that didn't think Celeste, with her accounting degree and her knowledge, couldn't do the budget, and she is working hard on all of her classes and everything to help her with the city clerk part, and as far as the new legislation goes, she's right, and nobody knows that. And I have talked to all the department heads, and almost all the department heads, yes, they'd like to have a city administrator, yes, they would, almost all of them, but they're all willing to step up and do their own budget and get it prepared. I also had Cole give me a list of the stuff that goes outside of the city budget. And he gave me a list, and I have sat down with one of the department heads, and we have looked at where that can be fostered out until we find somebody. And there are other people that can do that. Maybe we'll have to hire a consultant, maybe we'll have to have somebody come in finance-wise. But we can't just say that we're going to hire an interim because we only have a month. We just can't do that to the city of Kiyakuk.
Here's what I would like to see moving forward, and I'm just throwing my opinion out here. I would like to see it back on an agenda so that the council can take a vote on whether or not to proceed with Hinson Consulting for an interim. For Hinson Consulting, then, if that vote were to pass, I want to interview more than one person. I do not want to just talk to this, this five-star candidate. I want to have other people to compare this individual against. And I am not concerned about a one-month time limit. I would say, I'm more, I want to make sure we get the right person so that it does aid in finding the right person for the long-term position, and so whoever that person is can come in, and they have a manageable job out of the gate. I do think that, one of the things that was mentioned that maybe we overlooked was that an outside set of eyes of someone with experience can maybe help us identify things that we can focus on and improve that have just gone unnoticed by ourselves because we're always busy with so many different things. But in the meantime, we do need to prepare for our worst-case scenario, like Mr. Tillman said. So I would like to see us put it back on the agenda, but at the same time, have staff begin the process of what is that contingency plan if we don't like any of the candidates that would be brought forward for an interview? And I also would just like to speak that going through the interview process does not, like has been said, guarantee that we are going to hire one of those individuals, but at least it gives us then the information and the knowledge to make an informed decision if one of those individuals would have been of benefit to the city.
Carol, do you have anything that you would like to come up and add to this discussion?
I know that I would be able to do all the things that the city council says. Oh, man. I don't know if, 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 I don't know if, if I, oh, man, I don't know if I get the position that there will, oh, man. I'm ready to start as soon as tomorrow. I'm ready to start as soon as the council says that I can start. And I have, I have, I have the background, man. If you will look at my credentials, I have a JD, I have a master's in urban and regional planning. I have, I've done everything that Mr. O'Donnell, he does. Man. And I just ask that the city council would look at me, man. Man, oh, man. I don't know what else you, I don't know what else you guys would want. I don't know. But I am willing, and I am able to do the job. Man, okay, that is all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
If I may, and everybody accuses me of living in the past, but when I came here, city clerk, there was three people in that job. Ron Bodie was city clerk, and he had assistance of Donna Iler, Ilers, and Mrs. Robinson, I can't think of her first name, but those three were in there. And as they retired, we didn't replace them. Because you're working with tax dollars, and we all, we're going to save money, we're going to save money. Well, it's time to pay the piper. Because one person really can't do that job, because if, for some reason, she would leave, we would really be hurting. Really be hurting. So, I'm not against the city administrator, but I think, if we think that one person is going to come in here with their magic wand and put this ship right, I think you're not thinking correctly.
So, I want to clarify, and Celeste, I was not trying to attack you at all, and so you know this. Celeste has a full-time job as a city clerk. She's had two years of experience, which, it's not an easy job. It's a very difficult job. She has a lot of responsibilities, and I think as a council, we need to recognize that, and asking to put something else on her plate as one person now, because we don't have a city administrator for her to work with, is unfair to her. I just really think it's unfair to her, and that we need to be sensitive to what we're asking our department chairs to do as well.
I think it's unfair to most staff, and council will need to be prepared to really, one, put their money where their mouth is, which is literal for compensation. And if we're not willing to do that, what are we willing to do in our, in our own time? Who's willing to go to City Hall to make sure that XYZ is being done? Who's going to do that? And that's going to have to be all of us. I think that we're all willing, but it's going to be a real dedication that you have to be there, and it's a lot more than I think we're expecting.
Please. Please.
Kathy Dinger, 1884 Hilton Road. I'm also the superintendent of Kilkuck Community School District, but I want to be very clear in not muddying those roles, because I'm here talking as a resident, but I also have experience in the interim position, and I also have experience coming in... and I also have experience coming into a large position that requires a lot of knowledge, background, and skill. And so I cannot imagine if I were interviewing at a school district and they had not had an interim, they had decided just to kind of wing it for a couple of months, what I would have encountered walking into that position. So that's kind of from the personal perspective. Just so I can catch up, how long have we known Mr. O'Donnell was not going to be here anymore?
We accepted his resignation, I think, September 8th.
September, okay. So that gives you the personal perspective. From a resident's perspective, or professional, from a personal and a resident's perspective, I sent you all an email today. I value this city and what it gave to me growing up as a resident, a graduate, and now returning to bring my family here and to bring my profession here. I think we often underestimate the value of this community and what it gives to its residents. Certainly what it, what it gives to its children. And I referenced in my email that I still encounter people going, "Well, it's just Kiakuk. It's good enough. We'll get through. We'll make it." And I think we undervalue sometimes this community. I would ask you not to undervalue this community. I would ask you not to undervalue the value of continuity and stability for your residents, and the value of support that would come your way when you rationalize and provide a reason why you need to hire whoever you need to to provide adequate services for this community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've lived in, I've lived in Kiakuk for 26-plus years. And I would like Cole McDonald, if I can, if I can go to your office tomorrow and you, you go over everything that needs to be done.
Well, we have hired the consulting firm, so.
Well, I think she's talking about maybe being the interim.
Oh, okay.
Let me put it this way. You couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't experience it all in one day. So there'd have to be time to, to experience it. I'm not going to give an opinion on whether or not you could be prepared on December 8th to take over, right? I'm not going to give an opinion on that.
Yes.
I can sit down and show you where everything's at. I can sit down and show you where the, where, what the topics are. I can give you advice, but that's the best I can do.
Yes, yes. Because if we, we just let Mr. O'Donnell go, and there, there is, there is so much that we have to gain. Okay, again, yeah. But if I, if I can just start tomorrow, and then we will, then, then we will, then we will, then we will gain all that he has as the December 8th, that date. Yeah. But if, we have until November the 6th, going on to December 8th. I want to know if I can, if I can, if I can, if I can go to Mr. O'Donnell's office.
I think it's important that we also maintain with the process here because as of now, we haven't decided to move forward with an interim. So I think that's the first step, which would be at the next council meeting, if it's on the agenda. And then if that is moved forward, then I would encourage you to then apply and go through those channels. And then with that process,
Okay, then, uh-
Then get that cross-
Then, uh, why can't I, myself, go to Mr. O'Donnell's office? Then I can see the city administrator's duties?
I would recommend, if you wanted to have an informational interview with Cole on what the administrative duties are, that you can do that. But I don't believe that shadowing, the, shadowing the current city administrator would, would be advantageous for him to complete what he has to get done before he leaves.
I would, I would agree with that in that, you know, if you wanted to take an afternoon and I could show you what I have and the different issues and explain some different things. But I agree with Councilman Oltmans that shadowing me for the next six weeks, or five weeks, wherever it is, might hamper my ability to get the things done that I need to get done.
Thank you, Carol.
If I may, also, everybody wants to compare us with Fort Madison. And Fort Madison, I don't know, did they get a new administrator here the other day? But they've been without one for quite some time. That's where our situation and theirs are alike. Because they had a finance manager and a city clerk. They had a mayor, which had been mayor before and was experienced with, with the city government as mayor. We don't, we don't have, so we ain't comparing apples and apples. We're comparing apples and basketballs. I don't, but they was in, they did not hire an administrator temporarily. But they was in a different situation than what we're in. There is, I guess, from what I understand, only one city in Iowa that doesn't have a city administrator or manager.
Over this population of 5,000?
Pardon?
Over the population of 5,000.
So, I think we're like getting to the point where we probably need to quit repeating ourselves. And if anybody has anything they really want to say, we'll, we'll take one more chance at it. But first of all, I think what the consensus is that we need to, as a council, think about what we think is the necessary for a city administrator. We need to think about what, if we want to hire a city administrator, look for a city administrator, or we want to look for an interim before that. And we want to decide if we think that our city staff and the people in our community can help us and do whatever we need. And we need to come up with a plan as to what we believe is the highest points of everything that Cole will be leaving, besides the budget. We need to have that ready for the next council meeting, and that will be thrown out there. I don't know whether we want to do it in a workshop. If we do it in a workshop, it takes a lot longer to get hiring somebody. But I do think that that's where we are right now. If I'm wrong, somebody tell me.
So I'm curious about, just because there's going to be two weeks between now and the next council meeting, who's going to be developing the plan for if we do not have a city administrator in place starting December 8th?
We can add that to everything we're talking about. Everybody needs to put their thinking caps on. We need to decide. We need to reach out to the people in our community. Maybe they can, there's things that can help. We need to talk to our department heads. I don't, I, I don't think anybody in this room can tell you what's going to happen if, when Cole walks out the door. But I do know when Cole was being hired that there was a month before anybody was the city administrator, before Cole arrived.
However, that was one month, and it wasn't in the budget year, and it was a very different situation.
But it was still one month without everybody, and your department heads have done the budget for the last however many years.
I would, I would like to see us put it on the next meeting's agenda that we actually vote. And then after we vote, whether we vote for an interim or we vote not for an interim, case be closed. I'm man enough to, if y'all vote for, to hire an interim, I'll be on board 100%. But all I'm asking is if we vote not to, that you do the same. And quit talking about an interim and get on board with hiring a full-time. Because that's what we're supposed to be doing. If we're voting and we pass it, we need to stick to it. If we just keep, "Oh, well, we need to bring it again so we can vote on it again," that doesn't help us. So that's my only real request here, is let's put it on next meeting's agenda to where we can actually vote on it and get it done. And then we will decide, next meeting, whether we're going to hire an interim or strictly look for a full-time. And after that vote, whatever that outcome is, everybody get on board with what the vote outcome is.
I know that, Dan. My Councilman Tillman, sorry, my apologies. My question is, is not so much about, I think we need to consider the process for what, if, there's, there's three things I think we need to consider. First, we need to consider the scenarios. So scenario one is we do not hire an interim, and come December 8th, we should have in place, the city council needs to have in place, how we're going to fulfill those duties. That's one process that we need to figure out, and we have to do that. It's the responsibility of the council to do that, not for us to ask our department chairs to do that. It is our responsibility. Second, the scenario B, we choose to move forward with Hinson Consulting in an interim process. We negotiate what that looks like. We say, "Here, we like this about it, but we want to interview, for instance, we have to make a decision on if we want to change that process and discuss it and then decide." Okay? And then, three, we also need to have a conversation about the, in the, I mean, for instance, if we're going to ask, those are the two things that we have to do. We have to talk about compensation, timeline, and the council needs to do that. It's our responsibility. It's not our responsibility to say it's the department's responsibility. We are the council. We are the responsible organization here. We are the accountable to the, we are accountable to the electorate. And we need to do that. It is unfair for us to expect to put it on the mayor and the department chairs.
Okay, so I just said a few minutes ago, if nobody else has anything to say, I think it's time for us to wrap up.
Wait just a second. I would like to encourage the population to call us. I've had one phone call on this from a person that I treasure their, their opinion and take a lot of store in it. But we need your input in this. This is your community. You tell us what to do. You are the boss.
No, you just have to, you just have to speak at that so everybody at home can hear you.
So my one question is, Roger wants us to call. If we email you as well, will you respond?
Sure.
Well, let me just say that I sent emails to each and every council member several days ago, and I did not get responses from every one of them. So-
Okay.
So I just want to know, do you want us to call you? Do you want us to email you? What's the preferred method, then?
Whichever way you want to go with it. And if, and I think our council people now know that you are reaching out to them on an email.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Okay, with that being said, I keep saying, with that being said, so this time I'm saying, we're done.